Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, well, thank you all for being here. To open the meeting with roll call, please.
Brian is absent, Sam Filippo?
Here.
Cardy?
Here.
Carsonson?
Here.
Madigan?
Here.
Turner?
Here.
Honey?
Here. Announcements and correspondence?
Just some brief updates, Madam Chairperson, with respect to the Scarpella Kia dealership, I just want to let the board, the planning commission know that that was approved by the Dodge Board as relates to the site plan. As relates to the tax amendment for restricted uses on Lake Street, there was a very healthy discussion as it relates to that proposed change. It seems that the board is very comfortable with limitations on Main Street, but wanted it limited to Main Street, so they were not comfortable with restricting services and non-retail slash restaurants on Lake Street. And also wanted to advise the planning commission that I've been working with the mayor and Madam Chairperson. There's been a request for some additional training for the, for the planning commission, so I'm working with the American Planning Association in Chicago to work on some additional training. I know it's been ongoing professional training, so we anticipate probably within the next six weeks, there'll be a session at probably one of our regular meetings. From some members of the American Planning Association, which will walk you through some different training sessions. So with that, I'll conclude my update.
All right, thank you, Mr. Garrigan. Now we need approval of the September 6, 2023 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting minutes as presented.
So moved.
Sam Filippo?
Yes.
Cardy?
Yes.
Carsonson?
Yes.
Madigan?
Yes.
Turner?
Abstain.
Honey?
Abstain. We move to public comments. There any public comments? Nope, okay, old business? Old business, okay, then let's move on to new business, PZB 2316. Consideration of the site plan review and variance for the rear and side yard setback for a new storage building to be located at the property commonly known as 882 Anita Avenue, pin number 02-08-404-012.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairperson, let the record reflect that this is a public hearing being heard pursuant to public notice and court's loss. The applicable state statutes and applicable village ordinances, Madam Chairperson, this matter comes before you this evening for a variance in the site plan for the property company known as 882 Anita, that used to be an old circuit facility on Anita. The applicant is seeking a variance in site plan this evening for a new storage building. Just for the record, generally the applicant is proposing a new storage building on this site. There is previously an existing metal steel building in this general area, which no longer exists, I believe there was fire which destroyed the building. So the applicant is proposing approximately 5,000 square foot building, a new storage building, construction on this property. They are seeking a variance, a village ordinance, the property, the previous building was legally not conforming. Because that building no longer exists, the applicant is proposing a new building on the site for storage. They do need a variance, so there is a 15-foot set back, rear, rear setback requirement specifically that's outlined in the village's form-based code for this zoning district. The applicant's actual site plan, you'll see, applicant is proposing a 12-foot rear yard setback, which is adjacent to the Canadian National Railroad. Based on that single fact, the applicant does require a variance. So in accordance with the village's zoning ordinance, as you well know, the applicant must demonstrate certain findings or facts have been complied with to meet the requirements of a variance. So I will very briefly go through each variance requirement, and then I'll kind of review the site plan, I'll kind of walk you through what the applicant's being, what's the applicant specifically proposing as relates to this new storage building. The first finding effect is the variance is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance. Specifically, requested relief, as I've already outlined, I propose 12 feet for a rear yard setback, as I outlined, the required requirement is 15 feet. So applicant's looking for three feet in relief. Existing building was purchased by the applicant several years ago, and therefore the applicant is making, making small improvements on the subject site over the past several years. The applicant has identified the staff that based on their construction business and their other businesses ancillary to this building, they do need additional storage space. And based on that fact, they are proposing this new approximately 5,000 square foot storage building. Again, they're locating, proposing to locate this building based on the needs of their business and the preservation of an existing, basically, construction yard, which I'll highlight as part of the site plan review. So this proposed location is appropriate and generally the only location for this proposed building, and therefore they're seeking a relief from the village's rear yard setback. Again, I've already identified it's approximately a 5,000 square foot building, which will provide additional storage opportunities for the applicant. Second finding of fact, so that based on this fact, we would submit that based on the character of the area, as you have out, as I've outlined in my staff report, to the, to the adjacent of the property. To the east of the site is the Canadian National Railroad. This proposed site, there's an industrial building to the north, there's an industrial building to the south, and there are basically industrial buildings on the east side of Anita. So based on that fact, the general characters, area is clearly light industrial, there's nothing to demonstrate that this proposed variance would have a negative impact on adjacent properties or in any way diminish their property values. And therefore, we would submit, the applicant has met the first required finding effect for a variance. Second requirement is supply of the owners due to unique circumstances and that to stress strict enforcement of the zoning ordinance result in practical difficulties, impose exceptional hardships. Or special and unusual conditions that are generally found on other properties. Specifically, there's nothing that's inherently unique about this, and theoretically, the applicant could proceed not to develop the storage facility, but that would encumber their proposed business plan. And, but inherently, there's no unique hardship as part and parcel of this, a part of this proposed requested variance. The third finding effect is required for a variance is the property cannot yield a reasonable use of permit only under the conditions allowed by the zoning ordinance. As highlighted, highlighted above, the applicant could not proceed with the construction of this storage building but for requesting the relief of this variance from the required 15-feet setback to 12-feet. And therefore, they're asking for this variance, again, we do not believe that there would be any type of negative impact because this proposed rear yard setback is adjacent to Canadian National Railroad right away. So we generally, again, would reiterate, the requested relief is generally consistent with the character of this light industrial park. The fourth variant, fourth requirement, variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality, it will not be substantial detriment to property, properties, adjacent properties. Again, as I've highlighted, there's nothing to indicate that this variance would have a negative impact on adjacent properties, specifically to the north or the properties to the east or south. As I've already highlighted, the property is adjacent to Canadian National, the rear yard of this property basically butts the Canadian National, Canadian National right away. So there's nothing to indicate there would be a negative impact on surrounding properties. So base, we would submit respectfully, Madam Chairperson, the applicant has met the majority of the required findings and facts for a variance or the required setback. The second aspect is directing your attention to the actual site plan. As you well know, originally, the applicant highlighted their wish to construct a metal building on this proposed property. As you well know, we do not permit metal buildings unless somebody comes in for a formal variance. And based on discussions with the applicant, the applicant did agree, they constructed approximately 5,000 square foot building of CMU block. So the actual elevations are behind me, you can see all four elevations. It's basically a proposed for 5,000 square foot storage building constructed out of a CMU block. You see, the front of the area would have two bay doors along with an entrance, there would be actually a standing seam metal roof, which would be part of this overall property. The applicant has identified basically earth tone beige color for the block, and this metal standing, standing seam roof would generally conform or generally have same color scheme as the CMU black itself. Direct your actual attention to the actual site. You can see along this actual site plan, the best, the actual existing building, again, which was previously the circuit, industrial building owned by Mr. Patel. The applicant, there are several existing businesses in this building subdivided, there's also a fraternal club or, or a, a club that's in this facility that's being leased out. So this actual building, it butts Anita Avenue or Street, has number of suites and number of different uses. The applicant also operates a business on this property and also is looking for additional storage areas for their construction business. Therefore, that's the factual basis for the request for adding this approximately 5,000 square foot building. You can see the actual building is located, would be the northwestern portion of the property. There's an existing access, shared access with a, another owner, there's an existing building, which I believe at one time was part of this overall property, but now has separate ownership. I believe the owner of this prop, that property is actually here this evening. That property and this property owner have the shared access into this actual construction area. There's a large yard, which I'll give you some pictures, I want to show you some pictures, give you context. So this is looking, looking west, this was generally, general location of the proposed new building. This is actually pictures taken from Anita Street, looking west towards the Canadian National Railroad. This is actually looking south, there's existing addition as part of this overall building, as you can see in the site plan, which provides additional storage for the applicant. Again, the proposed 5,000 square foot building will be just adjacent to this area, it's unapproved large storage area, which is used for storage of equipment, materials, and other ancillary storage for this proposed business. Again, this is looking back towards Anita, looking east towards Anita Street, again, you can see the air picture of the actual storage yard. And the actual proposed building would be, again, just, just west of this where this picture's been taken. And this is the overall site plan, the area of the site plan itself, which shows you the overall context of the actual request this evening. The applicant has submitted landscape plan. So what, in course, you have the actual landscape plan, your packet, they do not have the landscape of the overall site, but they are required to landscape the perimeter of this proposed 5,000 square foot building. They are, have submitted a plan with over 100 plantings around the foundation of this proposed 5,000 square foot building, which is consistent with the village's site plan review ordinance. In addition, they have submitted a photometric plan, there will be wall packs, there will be no other lighting standards other than existing proposed wall packs. So you have specs for the wall packs of this building itself, which have been submitted. So as relates to stormwater, this property is under, based on the impervious area of the property, it currently is under the requirements for stormwater, there's, there's no actual retention area on this overall property. So unless there is a request for a complete improvement of the storage yard area, i.e. requiring the applicant to basically asphalt or put a concrete surface on the surface. There would be no requirements for additional stormwater requirements, as you well know. The applicant has submitted actual site plan, obviously, if there's any requirements for final engineering, there will be reviewed concurrent with the request for a voting permit. So our recommendation this evening, Madam Chairperson, is a favorable recommendation of the variance, it's complied with the village's ordinance. Also, we're making favorable recommendation this evening with four stipulations for the site plan, with that, I'll conclude my staff report and be more than happy to answer any questions. The owner of the building and the applicant's actually here this evening to answer any questions that you may have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrigan. The Sam Filippo?
So all of the landscaping is new gold pines, is that correct, what they're proposing?
That's correct, when you see one of the stipulations, my staff report, I did request some variety, I think there's an opportunity to incorporate some additional variety, variety around the foundations. As you all know, we also look for variety, so I asked for some, either some perennials or somewhat different shrubs, so.
Is the applicant's open to that?
I believe yes he is, so the applicant, we would work with the applicant's architect to submit a revised landscape plan prior going to the Dodge Board.
I think the only other, you know, question I had was the. Regardless, what is, what is the yard, I mean, what is, is it asphalt or is it a combination?
No, you can see this picture and I apologize, I'm struggling through my presentation, my pictures. You can see it's basically unapproved gravel, there is, there are some remnants of asphalt, broken up asphalt, but this is existing condition that's been located for many, many years. I mean, as a sidebar, there has been not so much with this applicant, I think the applicant's been, has made a good faith effort to try to clean, improve it, improve the site. But previously, previous owner were numerous code enforcement issues. So this site has always been a challenge as it relates to code enforcement. But that, that yard, you want to use, whatever you want to call it, construction yard, storage area?
Right.
It's basically a combination of mostly gravel and it's an unimproved surface, it's not.
Is there any concern that the village has, I mean, because I understand there's going to be construction equipment coming in and out, right, correct?
Correct.
So.
So in a perfect world, you know, we would probably, if this was a new proposal, we would require the applicant come in and probably asphalt that area or put a concrete hard surface in it. It's legally not conforming, so that's, you can see in my staff report, I did highlight that question. It's your prerogative, I think there have, there's precedent for requiring improvements, maybe the applicant would like to address that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Mr. McCurry?
The last building that was there had a fire in it, was demolition, demoed, hazed because of the fire, is that correct?
That's my recollection, yeah, that, that, there was an existing metal building, it was used by a previous tenant, and I think there was a fire and that building was demolished.
Has the fire department?
Approximately, two years ago.
Yeah, has the fire department looked at this plan at all?
It's been submitted to them, yes.
Okay, have they have any comments?
Yes, right now, no.
Is, where's there's fire hydrant to this?
Um, I, it's on Anita, I'm not sure exactly, there you go, I don't know the exact location of. As you well know, there are stipulations for a fire district for all comments, any type of approval is all subject for, for the fire district's review.
Right, distance for fire hydrant that should be in place for a building that's going up?
There's typically hydrants along Anita, I, again, if you're asking me the exact location of fire hydrant.
We've just had previous storage building areas and larger lots like this, a requirement to have a fire hydrant closer to the back end of the, of the facility if they're putting buildings back there, just.
As, right, I mean, obviously, the fire district, as I've already highlighted, has the prerogative to require additional fire improvements, so they, if, as part of the review, as you well know. If that fire district does request additional hydrant or whatever their request, as long as it's consistent with the fire code, it would be a stipulation, part of the building, approval of this process, so.
Right.
Typically, there's also a separate fire district review.
I think, I think the only fire hydrant is about in the middle of the front building. On Anita.
Yeah, maybe, can I have the applicant, maybe he can provide additional information?
Sure.
I don't know, Ivan, can you maybe provide additional information exactly where the hydrant is?
Excuse me, excuse me, before, beforehand, we need to have him sworn in, and if you'd come to the podium and then please speak into the microphone so that we can take appropriate notes. Would you swear, swear him in, please?
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth?
I do.
And state your name.
My name is Ivan Artlakov.
Can you spell that for me, please?
I V A N, last name A R A T L A K O V.
And your question, Mr. McCurry?
Uh, the location of the existing fire hydrant.
I think it's front and the middle of the building.
In, in, on Anita, yes, one location. Mr. Garrigan, what do we have for a distance from the front to the back of the land set right now on the property?
It's, it's several hundred feet, so probably the, as you saw, the, this, the actual fire district had the prerogative to actually add additional hydrant services fire.
Okay.
I mean, there's been no discussions with the fire district.
And they, and they haven't made any response to the?
As of right now, no, they, they have not, I mean, it's, which is not, which is typical. It's typical, well, no, it's, it's typical that you don't have a fire district review letter as concurrent with these proposals. As you well know, there's a stipulation, stipulation is added for a specific reason.
Right.
To give the fire district to write as part of the building review, the building permit review.
Sure.
To make sure that their requests are fully addressed, so that's generally concurrent with the building permit review, not prior to the site.
So at that time, they would, they would.
Correct.
If they need something repaired.
Yeah, they, I mean, you may be absolutely right, a reasonable point, there may be a need for additional hydrant. I mean, this building will be under the threshold for a fire sprinkler, so I don't, I don't believe this building would be required to be sprinkled. But if there's additional need to, for a hydrant or whatever the fire district would need, they would basically forward a letter to the village as part of the building, building permit review, which is subsequent, subsequent to zoning entitlement.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't see anything else that, that's glaring to me, I mean, the photometric plan is very basic, it's just the four wall packs and. It was an existing building there before that did burn down, and then the distance is just in that one corner, correct? That's, we're asking for the variance on, it's just that corner?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, the only, the relief is the actual setback for the rear, and, I mean, you could ask a reasonable question, why couldn't the building be moved? The challenge is, there's, it's too close to the existing property line, if the applicant moved it to the north, they would need a variance for, again, another side yard setback. If they moved it further to the east, then they would encroach into the access into the yard, so to get trucks through there would be a challenge, so I did look at that, you know. As you well know, we tried to avoid variances, if there's any way to avoid a variance, we tried to work with the applicant to avoid it or, or to, you know, try to conform with the village's ordinances. But based on the limitations of the site itself and the size of the building that the applicant is seeking, we determined it was appropriate for a variance in this case.
Yeah, and there's, what, 36 feet between the, this building and the existing building?
Right.
East, and then his, his plot is just the one plot, the one that's to the north, the two plots to the north are someone else's?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's why the side, side lot variance to the, to the north would, would be effective.
Correct, you shift the building further, you would need to add another variance.
That's all I have.
Okay, Ms. Carsonson?
Um, is, I guess I'm, I'm a little confused, so I just want to make sure I understand, so is this for Bornigan Farms, is that the? Organization, no?
Um, now, the applicant, well, I think the applicant, maybe the, the applicant actually outlined that, I believe they did buy that business, but I'll allow, I'll allow the applicant to answer that question.
Uh, I bought the business Bornigan Farms, but the owner of the building, it's like my other company, so.
So this will be used for all the?
No, not for what, not, like, used to, like, some of the machines, to store the machines, so.
Got it, okay, okay, um, and then a lot of my questions were asked, so I appreciate it, thank you.
Ms. Madigan?
I don't have any.
Mr. Turner?
Most of my questions have been asked, I just said, just for clarification, the, there is a club that is in this.
Building.
In the building, correct?
Yes.
And Mr. Garrigan, they have like a special use liquor license, correct?
They do have a liquor license with the village.
Okay, but, and, and just for the record, they're, they, that, they are not going to be inside this building, correct?
Not this new building, no.
It's, it's separate.
Correct.
Well, that was just, my only question is for clarification, thank you.
And, and I do have a question as well, uh, for the railroad, is there, is there any easement on the railroad as far as how many feet away from the railroad track?
There's no buffer requirement from the, well, I mean, after they have a pretty healthy right of way, as you all know, along there, but there's no buffer, I mean, there's no set buffer that you had to be 50 feet with it off the existing right of way of the railroad.
Okay, okay, all right, well, I guess, at this point, then we would need motion. And this is.
I'll make a motion to approve PZB 23-16 for consideration of the site plan review, variance for the rear yard setback. After the new storage building located on property, commonly known as 882 Anita, pin number 02-08-404-012.
I'll second.
Wait, with the recommendations of staff and then variance and the landscaping, I know.
Yes.
Yes. With the four stipulations?
Yes, yes, as presented.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Sam Filippo?
Yes.
Cardy?
Yes.
Carsonson?
Yes.
Madigan?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, motion pass. We go then to. PZB 2318 is tabled to December, correct?
We are requesting that the public hearing be continued, that meeting, we continue to work with the applicant, the solar farm, so we are continuing, requesting the continuation of the public hearing.
Okay.
So that's a motion to continue the public hearing, so the applicant doesn't have to renotice.
Okay, so I need a motion.
So I'll make a motion to continue PZB 23-18 in consideration of the special use variance in site plan for the solar farm to be located with properly commonly known as 650. East North Avenue PIN 02-03-300-027, to be continued to the December meeting.
Second?
Sam Filippo?
Yes.
McCurry?
Yes.
Carsonson?
Yes.
Madigan?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, then we move on to item number three, PZB 23-19, consideration of a variance for relief from the village's height limitation of 60 feet per towers to allow for the construction of an antenna. Tower of 100 feet to be located at the property commonly known as 41133 North Route 83, PIN 02-14-400-025.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairperson, again, let the record reflect that this is a public hearing being heard pursuant to public notice in accordance with all applicable state statutes and applicable local ordinances. Madam Chairperson, this matter comes before you this evening for a variance by the applicant commed for a construction of a tower. The applicant is seeking a variance, they can construct a antenna support structure for their new smart grid initiative, the commed has a major new initiative, which is consistent with state statute, which is called a DA mesh network. And based on that requirements, based on complying with their franchise agreement with the village, based on complying with their obligations to the state of Illinois. They are requesting this evening a relief of the village's current existing limitations on tower heist. Currently, we have a limitation on tower heist of 60 feet. I'm supposed to be walking you through what the Commonwealth Edison is proposing, but as you well know, as, as an actual staff report, there's actual copy of the context map. There is existing substation, there's an existing station that's owned by commed, which is just, just off Route 83, just a little bit east of Route 83. The property is currently zoned as we speak, M1, this substation has been currently located at this subject site for many, many years. It's adjacent to a large commed transmission lines, also adjacent to the Canadian National Railroad. The applicant is specifically this evening requesting relief to construct the 104-foot tower as part of this new smart grid network. It's, and they do require a variance as I've outlined. The applicant, there's existing access drive, which is on 83, this property can actually not, cannot, can't even be seen from 83, it's actually just located on the east side of the Canadian National Railroad.
This is actually.
So I give you a picture, this is actually a picture of the existing substation that's owned by ComEd. The tower will be constructed um within the parameters of this actual uh substation itself. So again, um adjacent regards to context, you also get context to properties. Uh to the um west of this area is commercial, actually to the actual west is the Canadian National Railroad, the existing ComEd transmission line. Um but to to the west of the Canadian National Railroad, there are commercial properties along Route eighty three. Uh to the north of this property uh is ag property, to to the east is all ag and to the southeast is ag. So generally, you're looking at an area to the east, which is all generally undeveloped. I think there is a sportsman's club, uh which is a little bit located to the east of the site. But basically agricultural area, and there's really no adjacent residential development to this site and to the, to the west is commercial. So that gives you the actual context of the overall site itself. So the applicant, again, is requesting a variance, so I very briefly walk you through the variance that's being requested this evening for the proposed hundred foot tower as part of this proposed smart grid. Um the first required findings of fact, the variance is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of zoning ordinance. Again, the general area, as I've already outlined, is commercial to um commercial to the west and agricultural to uh the, to the east and south. There's nothing to indicate that this proposed construction of this tower would have any negative impact on any of the adjacent properties. As I've outlined, um there's no adjacent existing residential to this site itself. Even if there was residential, as you well know, there's proliferation of towers, specifically cell towers adjacent to um residential areas throughout the Antioch area. So even if it was, uh there wasn't adjacent residential area, there's really nothing to indicate the construction of towers consistent with this request, request the height would have a negative impact on any of the adjacent properties. We generally would submit this is generally consistent. I think the most important feature is there is existing transmission line along the Canadian National right of way. So this proposed tower is consistent with the height of that existing transmission line, which goes north and south, which services um the electric, electrical needs, the whole region. So again, what's being proposed is generally very consistent with existing character that exists uh on this property, uh especially consistent with the existing transmission lines that are located adjacent to this overall, this overall substation. Number two, as we're like required findings of fact, the plight of the owners due to unique circumstances and thus strict enforcement of the zoning ordinance will result in practical difficulties or impose exceptional hardships due to the special unusual conditions that are generally found on the properties. Again, this requested variance is critically important um for the applicant to be allowed to continue their improvements of the grid, as I've already outlined this proposed project. It's part of the uh regional improvements for a smart grid, which is consistent with the requirements of the state statute in the village's franchise agreement with the applicant. As you well know, one of the biggest uh infrastructure challenges we have is the improvement of our electrical grid, not only on a regional basis, but also on a national basis. So there's clearly would be a hardship, uh the applicant could not conform uh with the requirements of the village's franchise agreements or the requirements of state statute, if they were denied the opportunity to construct this tower, which is part and parcel, again, of their proposed smart grid improvements. So we will submit respectfully, the applicant has complied with the second finding of fact. The third finding of pro, fact is the property not, cannot yield a reasonable use if permitted only under conditions allowed by the zoning ordinance. Again, the applicant is required to get relief from the variance to be allowed to construct this a hundred and four hut foot height building, um tower. Again, a sixty foot tower would not conform with the requirements. And based on that fact, they do need relief from our ordinance to make this overall regional improvement. The next finding of fact that's required is the variance in granite will not alter the essential character of the locality and will not have a substantial detriment. Consistent with, I've already outlined, there's nothing to indicate that this proposed requested variance or construction a hundred foot uh tower, which is consistent with the existing transmission lines that are located adjacent to the substation, would have any negative impact on the property values of the surrounding properties. I've already provided you a context of what currently exists around the substation and the proposed site itself. So overall, we are making favorable recommendation this evening um of the overall requested variance. Um and with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions. Uh consul for Commonwealth Edison is actually here this evening, along with representatives from ComEd to answer any questions that you may have specifically. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrigan. Ms. San Filippo?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. McCurry?
I have no questions at this time.
Ms. Carstensen?
No questions.
Ms. Madigan?
I have two.
Okay.
Um well, the first one is, um and again, more probably my own curiosity, but how tall is actually one of those holes? That you see in that?
The transmission lines, I believe, are around a hundred feet, I believe. At const, const. Yeah, so maybe, I'll maybe allow counsel to specifically answer that question. I believe we said a hundred, hundred forty? Between a hundred and a hundred forty.
And then, Michael, because of, again, what you're saying, right? So this is all because of an upgrade.
Ms. Madigan? Okay. Please, please, I I would feel better too, please. State your name.
Uh my name is Will Otter of Sidley Austin Outside Land Use Council for uh ComEd.
Okay, thank you.
Did you get that, Rich?
Will uh Will Otter, like me.
Okay, got it.
Okay, great. Okay, go ahead.
Swear. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, okay, now we can.
Thanks. Um so my, my, I heard what you're asking. But my next question is, Michael, do you think that we need to look at this as a whole? Because obviously, this is a smart upgrade, right? And so we know we're not going backwards in technology, we're always going forward. So is this something that we should look at, maybe amending the sixty foot limit?
You know, that may be appropriate. It may be one day look, reevaluate um our, you know, um our current limitations towers. I mean, most, a lot of these cell towers, I believe, are less than sixty feet. I think some of them are taller. This would be an exception, because this is obviously a major regional improvement as part of the smart grid. So as you, I don't think we re, we have, we had many variances requesting relief from our sixty foot limitation. I can't think of one we've had in the past few years. Um but that's a, that's a fair question, something we can look at.
That's all I have.
Mr. Turner?
I have no questions.
Okay, and nor do I. So at this point, I need a motion.
All right, I'm, I'll make a motion to approve P Z B twenty three dash nineteen, consideration for variance for relief from the village's height limitation of sixty feet towers to allow for the construction of an antenna tower of one hundred feet to be located at the property, property commonly known as four one one three three North Route eighty three, pin number oh two dash one four dash four hundred dash zero two five.
With, with the?
With, with the conditions as presented.
Question, do we want, do you want to, is there anyone else from the public who want to say anything?
Yeah, during public comments, probably.
Performed as per the record, any public comment?
Any public comments?
I'll say, we do.
Okay.
Cardy? Your name is?
Joe Turnage. Yes, it's T as in Tango, U R N A G E.
Does it write nothing? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. So uh I'm Joe Turnage, and I'm the uh External Affairs Manager for ComEd. I just wanted to say it's, it's uh great working with this particular board. We appreciate you guys uh voting in favor of this project. I just wanted to say, uh Ms. Madigan, I do like that idea of uh looking at that uh, the ordinance and changing the uh the height variance. So great idea, thanks.
This also makes power outage is less in our area, right? I guarantee that. Understood.
Just leave us your card. Okay, where are we at now?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Sam Filippo?
Yes.
Cardy?
Yes.
Carstensen?
Yes.
Madigan?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Honey?
Yes. Motion passed, okay? Well, at this point, then I think.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.